Welcome to the I-45 Central Walker County Widening Segment 2B Virtual Public Hearing, which has been prerecorded. The proposed project extends from State Highway 30 to 0.7 miles south of FM 1696 in Huntsville, Walker County, Texas. On behalf of the Texas Department of Transportation, better known as TexDOT, the Bryan District, and Doug Marino, the Director of Transportation Planning and Development for the Bryan District and Hearing Officer, thank you for participating in this virtual public hearing. This prerecorded virtual public hearing presented by TexDOT is provided to share information and encourage comments from the public regarding the proposed I-45 Central Walker County Widening Project Segment 2B. This virtual public hearing presentation is available online at our TexDOT website,
In-person instead of online. In-person attendees will be able to view the same presentation delivered in the online virtual public hearing, which will be playing on a screen, review hard copies of project materials, ask questions of text dot staff from a socially-distanced approach, and leave written comments. The in-person public hearing option will be held on Thursday, January thirteenth, 2022, from four PM to six thirty PM at the Walker County Storm Shelter located at four five five State Highway seventy-five Huntsville, Texas. This presentation will provide the public hearing format and procedures, a summary of the public involvement activities for the project, a description of the proposed segment two B I forty-five widening project, including the purpose and need, the funding status and anticipated project schedule, an overview of the environmental process and findings, an explanation of the text dot right-of-way process, and how to provide hearing comments. This virtual public hearing will present the same information as that shared at the in-person public hearing. However, the comment process for this virtual public hearing will be different from what we normally conduct at an in-person public hearing, and will be explained shortly. Virtual Public Hearing Format and Procedures. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to present the proposed project and collect public comments, then compile and include them as a formal part of the environmental and project documentation. There are items that must be covered as part of the process. The slides and script of this virtual public hearing will serve as the verbatim transcript for all that is presented in this hearing and will be included in the final project documentation. There are several ways to comment on the proposed project. All comments must be submitted or postmarked by Friday, January twenty-eighth, 2022, to be part of the official public hearing record. Comments and mental instructions will be provided at the end of this presentation and are summarized here. You may submit a verbal comment by calling the text dot public comment line established for this project immediately following this virtual public hearing presentation, or any time during the formal comment period for this hearing. You may submit a written comment through the comment box provided for the in-person hearing. You may submit a written comment by mail to our text dot district office. Or you may submit a written comment by email to a designated text dot project manager. Both written and verbal comments will be considered equally. If you submit your comments in writing, it is not necessary to repeat your comments verbally. As part of the text dot hearing procedure, we will not provide formal response to your comments during the comment period. However, we will be available to answer your questions once the hearing has adjourned. Public Involvement Purpose and Timeline. The public involvement purpose for the proposed project includes providing public involvement opportunities for stakeholders, roadway users, and the public to engage with the project team. Two public meetings have been held for this project. The first public meeting was held in November, 2016, and the second held in August, 2018. Text dot also held stakeholder meetings with the City of Huntsville and Walker County officials throughout the project development process. This virtual public hearing is being held to present the proposed design, present project findings, and gather public comments. As previously mentioned, an in-person hearing option will also be provided on January thirteenth, 2022, from four PM to six thirty PM at the Walker County Storm Shelter. You are encouraged to submit comments on the proposed project after reviewing the hearing materials and listening to this presentation. Notices for this virtual public hearing were published in the Huntsville item on December eighteenth and twenty-sixth, 2021. The notice was posted on the text dot website on December twentieth, 2021. Notices were mailed to elected officials and adjacent property owners on December sixteenth, 2021. Project Description. The proposed project extends along I forty-five for approximately four point seven miles from State Highway thirty to zero point seven miles south of FM sixteen ninety-six in Huntsville, Walker County. The proposed segment two B project would widen I forty-five from four to six lanes, including reconstruction and realignment of freeway main lanes and ramps. In addition, the project would create two new interchanges. The first would be located near San Jacinto Street west of I forty-five and Moffett Springs Road east of I forty-five, and the second would be located north of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice Headquarters. A raised median along State Highway seventy-five from Brookview Drive to FM twenty-eight twenty-one would be constructed to reduce vehicle-turning conflicts. The project would also improve drainage structures, bridges, frontage roads, and crossroads adjacent to the new ramps and interchanges. Please note the segment two A widening project along I forty-five in Huntsville from State Highway thirty to State Highway nineteen is currently under construction with expected completion in the fall of 2026. Purpose and Need. The purpose of this project is to enhance freight mobility, address congestion along the I forty-five corridor, and locally for the citizens of Huntsville. The project will increase safety by utilizing the latest design standards and improve the corridor's function as a primary hurricane evacuation route. The Texas Demographics Center predicts that the state's population could double between now and 2050, much of which will be within the areas between Houston and Dallas. And with additional people comes additional traffic. Traffic projections from text dots transportation planning and programming division indicate an increase in average daily traffic of approximately fifty-four percent between 2020 and 2050. The existing roadway will not be able to accommodate the expected traffic growth. The corridor also exhibited a fifty-six percent crash rate increase between 2012 and 2016. Finally, the corridor currently exhibits peak hour congestion that will only worsen over time without the proposed improvements. Proposed Improvements. The proposed improvements for the I forty-five segment two B widening project include widening the I forty-five main lanes from four to six lanes, three in each direction, and improving main lane shoulders, replacing the existing I forty-five main lane pavement with concrete pavement, improving the frontage roads, including shoulder improvements, and converting the existing two-way frontage roads to one-way frontage roads, increasing the vertical clearance under I forty-five main lane bridges to eighteen point five feet, providing pedestrian and bicycle accommodations along the urban area frontage roads within the corridor, improving drainage structures as needed along the corridor, updating existing interchanges to improve their traffic operation, and constructing two new interchanges. The first would be located near San Jacinto Street west of I forty-five and Moffett Springs Road east of I forty-five, and the second would be located north of the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, or TDCJ, headquarters. The design schematic, which illustrates the proposed design presented in this virtual public hearing, is available for viewing and download at the text dot website, www dot text dot dot gov. Just type "I forty-five segment two B hearing" in the keyword search box. The following slides will present key features of the proposed project. The existing conditions along I forty-five, as shown in the existing typical section, consists of a four-lane divided rural freeway, two lanes in each direction separated by a grassy median and two-lane frontage roads. The proposed design, as shown in the typical section, would consist of a six-lane divided urban highway, three lanes in each direction separated by a concrete traffic barrier and shoulder improvements. The frontage roads would be reconstructed to include a four-foot shoulder to allow for on-street bicycle traffic. All two-way frontage roads within the project limits would be converted to one-way frontage roads. In addition, a shared-use path would be constructed along urban area frontage roads to accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians. The ten-foot-wide shared-use paths would allow bicyclists and pedestrians to travel safely in each direction along the corridor. The existing interchange at the intersection of I forty-five and FM seventeen ninety-one will be upgraded and replaced with a double roundabout, often referred to as a dog bone roundabout, as shown in this slide. Roundabouts have several advantages over traditionally signalized intersections because they reduce the number of conflict points at an intersection, they improve traffic flow through the intersection since there would be less delay without traffic signals, especially during non-peak hours, and studies have shown that there is a significant reduction of injury crashes, incapacitating crashes, and fatalities. At this intersection, a new bridge, shown in red over the intersection, will be constructed for the I forty-five main lanes. The double roundabout configuration consists of a roundabout on each side of I forty-five where traffic would be able to flow through the intersection unsignaled. The roundabouts would operate with traffic coming from FM seventeen ninety-one, State Highway seventy-five, and the I forty-five frontage roads. The underpass area will be widened to accommodate the double roundabout configuration and resulting northbound and southbound through lanes, as well as U-turn lanes from the frontage roads so that the U-turning traffic can continue to bypass the intersection. Bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, shown in purple, consisting of sidewalks and crosswalks, will be provided to allow for safe crossing under I forty-five. Regarding ramps near the FM seventeen ninety-one interchange, the two ramps south of FM seventeen ninety-one and the northbound ramp between FM seventeen ninety-one and Moffett Springs Road would be upgraded to current standards. The southbound ramp between FM seventeen ninety-one and Moffett Springs Road would be reconfigured from an exit ramp to an entrance ramp. As illustrated in this slide, a new double or dog bone roundabout interchange would be constructed near San Jacinto Street west of I forty-five and Moffett Springs Road east of I forty-five. In addition, a traditional roundabout would be constructed at the intersection of State Highway seventy-five and Brookview Drive to improve general traffic flow and local connectivity through this area, as well as maintain access to residential neighborhoods. At this intersection, a new bridge, shown in red over the intersection, will be constructed for the I forty-five main lanes. The double roundabout configuration consists of a roundabout on each side of I forty-five where traffic would be able to flow through the intersection unsignaled. The roundabouts would operate with traffic coming from Moffett Springs Road, the I forty-five frontage roads, and the new access road west of I forty-five coming from a new roundabout that would be constructed at the intersection of State Highway seventy-five and Brookview Road. Moffett Springs Road east of I forty-five would be realigned, as shown, to provide access to the new double roundabout interchange. The underpass area would accommodate the double roundabout configuration and resulting northbound and southbound through lanes, as well as U-turn lanes from the frontage roads so that U-turning traffic can bypass the intersection. Bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, shown in purple, consisting of sidewalks and crosswalks, will be provided to allow for safe crossing under I forty-five. As shown on this slide, a new interchange would be constructed along I forty-five at a location approximately point five miles north of the TDCJ headquarters. The objective of the interchange is to establish circulation for the proposed one-way frontage roads. It is noted that the northbound frontage roads would be new frontage road construction. At this intersection, a new bridge, shown in red over the intersection, would be constructed for the I forty-five main lanes. The underpass area, shown in green, would accommodate U-turn lanes from the frontage roads so that U-turning traffic can access both sides of the I forty-five frontage. Regarding ramps near the interchange, the northbound ramp between Moffett Springs Road and the new interchange would be a new-location ramp. The southbound ramp between Moffett Springs Road and the new interchange would be reconfigured from an entrance ramp to an exit ramp. North of the new interchange, a new-location northbound entrance ramp to I forty-five and a new-location southbound exit ramp to the southbound frontage road would be constructed. Raised medians provide the following features: enhanced safety by reducing vehicle conflicts between left-turning, head-on traffic, and crossing traffic; improved access management along a corridor; and improved traffic flow through dedicated turn lanes with adequate storage. Nationally, raised medians have shown a twenty-seven percent reduction in crashes, and recent median projects in the text dot Bryan district have reduced crashes by sixty-five percent. This slide presents the raised median configuration from Brookview Drive to I forty-five that would be constructed between the proposed new double roundabout interchange near San Jacinto Street and Moffett Springs Road and the new roundabout configuration proposed at the intersection of State Highway seventy-five and Brookview Drive as presented previously. Local access from San Jacinto Street to State Highway seventy-five would be provided, as shown, via a new roadway connection. This slide presents the raised median configuration that would be constructed from the proposed double roundabout interchange at FM seventeen ninety-one to FM twenty-eight twenty-one. A median break will be provided at Kevin Williams Road to allow access to the Hartz Veterans Museum of Texas and City of Huntsville Service Center. Also shown on this slide is the raised median configuration for an unsignaled continuous green tea intersection that would provide access to Kate Bar Ross Park for northbound vehicles on State Highway seventy-five. Southbound vehicles on State Highway seventy-five would proceed uninterrupted through this location. Project Funding and Anticipated Project Schedule. The proposed project has an estimated construction cost of approximately two hundred ten million dollars. This estimate is preliminary and subject to change. The project is included within the statewide Transportation Improvement Program and the Ten-Year Unified Transportation Program. The source of funds are from text dots category four Rural Connectivity Program, which consists of ninety percent federal and ten percent state funding contribution, and text dots category twelve Strategic Priority Program, which consists of eighty percent federal and twenty percent state funding. The general project development schedule is shown on this slide. We are currently in the process of completing the environmental documentation and developing contract construction plans for the project. The anticipated let date for contractor bidding is fall of 2025, with an expected construction start date in early 2026. Construction would take approximately three years to complete. Environmental Process. The text dot Bryan district conducted the environmental study and documentation for this I forty-five segment two B project in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA. We are required to share this statement, shown on this slide, at all of our public outreach activities and environmental documentation. Its purpose is to notify the public and other agencies that the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, has delegated some of its responsibilities to text dot when it comes to the environmental review and approval of certain types of transportation projects. As mentioned earlier, the environmental study and documentation was conducted to comply with NIPA. The study identified and assessed potential impacts by the proposed project regarding specific aspects of the natural and human environment listed on the slide. Text dot coordinated with various state and federal agencies, as well as local stakeholders. This was done in order to develop a project that complies with all applicable regulations and takes into account the concerns of civic and business interests, as well as private citizens. The results of the environmental study for the proposed I forty-five is summarized as follows: The project will not impact air quality. There will be no impacts to undisturbed archaeological resources or any historic properties. A community impact analysis determined that any minor impacts to community cohesion would be offset by the improved mobility and connectivity as a result of the project. Therefore, no permanent community impacts are anticipated. It was also determined that there would be no disproportionately high or adverse impacts to environmental justice or limited English proficiency populations. The project will have no effect on any federally-listed species or its habitat. Potential habitat for state-listed species is present within the study area. Text dot will implement best management practices as specified in its programmatic agreement with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to avoid impact to state-listed species. The proposed project was reviewed by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department's Wildlife Habitat Assessment Branch, and they had no comments. The assessment was performed to identify hazardous materials within the project area. Leaking petroleum storage tank sites were identified through a regulatory database review. Additional investigations are ongoing regarding these sites to determine if any remediation measures are needed. Bridges to be replaced within the study area were tested for both asbestos-containing materials and lead-based paints. No asbestos or lead-based paint was identified. Existing and predicted traffic noise levels were modeled using the approved FHWA traffic noise model. An increase of no greater than four decibels was predicted. Noise abatement measures were evaluated where the noise impacts were anticipated, but this evaluation determined that the noise abatement measures are not reasonable and feasible for this project. For impacts to water resources, text dot will comply with all state construction permitting, stormwater management, and notification requirements. It is anticipated that work within waters of the US will be authorized under an individual permit issued by the US Army Corps of Engineers. The findings of the environmental study show that this project has no significant impact on the environment and that no unusual circumstances exist, and thus the project qualifies to be categorically excluded from the requirements to prepare an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement under NIPA. The proposed project plans and details on the environmental studies performed and the conclusions reached will continue to be available for review at the text dot Bryan District Office. Text dot Right-of-Way Process. The project requires approximately thirty-seven point six acres of new right-of-way, which includes displacements of two commercial properties. When acquiring right-of-way, text dot follows the Federal Uniform Act and the State of Texas Landowners' Bill of Rights. The Right-of-Way Acquisition Process begins with a survey at each tract of land of the proposed right-of-way parcels as identified in the project schematic. A registered professional land surveyor will produce a map of all right-of-way for the project, as well as a parcel sketch and legal land descriptions for each parcel of land requiring acquisition. As a general rule, the next step is to obtain environmental clearance for the project, after which the survey documents are then turned over to a contracted independent appraiser who will notify the landowner to set a meeting time to conduct an appraisal of the parcel and property. The independent appraiser will determine the fair market value of the parcel, including the value of any damages to the remainder and the value of all improvements on the parcel. Text dot will provide the landowner with a copy of that report, along with a letter offering that value as the purchase price. The landowner may make one counteroffer if there are elements affecting the value that have been neglected in the report. Text dot has an administrative settlement team who will consider a counteroffer and recommend whether to accept it or not. If the landowner agrees to the offered value or an administrative settlement value, then text text dot will process the necessary records of the transaction to take possession of the right-of-way. If the landowner does not agree with the value of the offer and an administrative settlement is not reached, then the next avenue available to the landowner is a special commissioners' hearing. The special commissioners are three local citizens knowledgeable of local land values who are appointed by the judge whose court has jurisdiction over the area. These commissioners hear from the landowner and from text dot as to the value of the property, and then make their own judgment as to that value. The amount of that judgment is deposited by the state in the registry of the court, and the state takes possession of the right-of-way at that time. The landowner may decide whether to withdraw the awarded funds or seek further remedy through a jury trial. The state may also seek a jury trial if the state does not agree with the commissioner's award. The trial is heard before a jury in the district court, and the jury decides the appropriate award. This jury award may also be appealed by either side through the civil appeals process. The Uniform Act also provides for relocation assistance to those who are displaced by a project. This assistance may cover moving expenses, business losses during the move, and other expenses for a commercial displacement. It may cover moving expenses for relocating residents, whether they are tenants or owners. Eligible expenses may include the cost of moving real or personal property and possibly supplemental funds if similarly valued properties are not available. The move must be to a decent, safe, and sanitary location that is of equal or greater value than the original location. Relocation resources would be made available to all eligible displaced residents, including tenants, without discrimination. If you have any questions about the right-of-way process, you can contact the text dot Bryan District Right-of-Way Specialist, Melissa Sevilla, at nine seven nine seven seven eight nine six zero seven. Provide Hearing Comments. As previously mentioned, text dot is interested in receiving comments you might have on the information presented about this project. We understand this virtual meeting format is a bit different, so let's take a few minutes and explain the comment process. Comments can be submitted in a variety of ways. If you are attending the in-person hearing option, you may submit a written comment through the comment box provided for the in-person hearing. Hard copy comment forms will be made available. You may submit a verbal comment by calling the text dot public comment line established for this project at nine three six two four one eight eight zero two, immediately following this virtual public hearing presentation, or any time during the formal comment period for this hearing, from four PM Thursday, January thirteenth, 2022, until eleven fifty-nine PM Friday, January twenty-eighth, 2022. You may submit a written comment by email to jankeyongcam at jankeyong dot cam at text dot gov. You may submit a written comment by mail to our text dot Bryan district office. Mail comments to text dot Bryan district office, attention jankeyongcam, two five nine one, North Earl Rutter Freeway, Bryan, Texas, seven seven eight oh three. A comment form is available online and can be found at our text dot website, www dot text dot dot gov. Just type "I forty-five segment two B hearing" in the keyword search box. Both written and verbal comments will be considered equally. If you submit your comments in writing, it is not necessary to repeat your comments verbally. While comments are always welcome, all public hearing comments must be submitted or postmarked by Friday, January twenty-eighth, 2022, to be part of the official public hearing record. If you have general questions or concerns regarding the proposed project or virtual public hearing, please contact Neil Riddle, text dot project manager, by phone at nine seven nine seven seven eight two one six five, between the hours of eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, at any time during the project development process. Thank you for participating in the virtual public hearing. This concludes the public hearing for the I forty-five Walker County Widening Project Segment two B. This hearing is adjourned.